To the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Whole Meeting for April 4, 2017. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's absent. Camerer?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Danny?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
President Wallace?
Here. First item we have on our Committee of the Whole Meeting this evening is under planning and zoning. Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item we have is 2250-2260 Southwind Boulevard. Could've swore that we just talked about this. So if staff has anything to add, I greatly appreciate it. Otherwise, I guess the issue before us is whether we're going to forward this matter onto the Village Board for a final vote.
The only thing I have is the Plan Commission reviewed it and recommended approval.
Okay. Are there any questions or concerns from the committee?
The only question I would have is, is there any reason why this didn't go straight to Board?
There was discussion on the impact on the neighborhood, and I think that some of the trustees wanted to see what the reaction from the residents would be. Turns out, there wasn't any reaction, and we've just brought it back to committee.
I don't have any. Okay, so then we'll move this matter on to the Village Board? Okay. So the second matter we have on planning and zoning tonight is Balanced Family Chiropractic, the wonderful thing that's going to happen in our downtown. So with that one, I turn it over to staff to give us a little bit of detail on this.
Thank you, Trustee Ranky. And we do have Balanced Family Chiropractic's owner, Dr. Ackerman, and Julie Sailors, and Brian Bowie, who are the developer and planners for this project. And it is a wonderful project, and we're looking forward to it. It's a rebuild of the existing building that's down what we used to call the Borman Building, just a little south of Village Hall at 366-368 South Main. It's a 6,152-square-foot building consisting of the chiropractic office on the first floor, approximately 4,285 square feet, and two residential apartments above the, on the second floor of 1,860 square feet on both the first and second floor towards the rear of the building. As you can see, the building's going to look very nice, design-wise, and here's kind of the profile views on it. It essentially is needing site plan review and variations. The site plan's pretty straightforward. The building's going to sit on the lot facing South Main Street with parking around it with landscaping, and then there's some variations to allow the building and parking in the front side and rear yard setbacks because of the lot size. The existing building was built in 1987, and it was used for many years as a veterinary clinic and office building. And as I said, the design is going to accommodate nicely into the downtown. Here's the floor plan, showing the first floor and the apartments. The variations are really 30-foot variation from the 50-foot front yard setback for locating closer to the roadway, 25-foot variation from the required 30-foot rear yard to keep the existing parking lot in its current location, and a 10-foot variation from the required 20-foot side yard to locate the parking and building in those areas. Basically, the curb cut's going to remain in the middle of the property, and they share one with the commercial building to the south. There is a cross-access easement recorded, so that will basically maintain with that cross-access. There's 27 parking stalls, one handicap. It exceeds our 23 parking requirement. The trash enclosure is going to be added, and this is inconsistent with, it is consistent with our TOD plan, including the strategies for revitalization of older properties in the downtown. And petitioner has been in the village since 2006 in a previous location, and they are here to answer any questions.
Jim, you just mentioned that the, yeah, maybe have Doctor come on up front. As I was reading through this, I thought that the Doctor was going to shut down the main entrance and just have the south entrance, but that's not what you just said right there.
I'm sorry, I misspoke.
Okay.
Just going to have the cross-access easement.
Right, okay.
I was trying to read it and...
Yes, okay. I thought that's what I read. So that's what you intend to do. And is that jointly owned by the property to the north, or is it...
Well, there's a cross-easement between our two properties, so that a portion of the driveway in between, I guess it would be, you know, the still barn grill, that kind of whole area, and ours, that we share an entryway. So we're going to take away the one entryway in the front and make that kind of yard, and then just share the entryway into the office.
There's a 20-foot wide easement, 10-foot on each property.
Do you think there's the potential for that to get a little dicey at some point in time, Robin? I mean, I mean...
There's another entrance on the other side, so there's actually two entrances into that strip mall. So I see it as kind of, it's already flowing really well, and I, you know, I've been through there quite a bit. So I think it's going to be really a nice kind of way to get the building closer to the front, you know, with all the parades and stuff going by there. We really see it as a way to kind of get closer into the community and be able to do our events if we have something in the back or do that.
I'm not saying it's a bad idea.
Oh, yeah, try it through.
I'm not saying it's a bad idea at all. I'm just simply saying I'd hate to see you being put in a position where you get another landowner that comes in and buys that property to the north of you and basically says, "Well, this is my property here, and I'd prefer that you don't send your people on it."
I think the easement's forever, right?
Yeah, the easement protects her.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, just, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah.
I don't suppose there's any chance you'd buy the property to the south, would you?
I'm hoping for a coffee shop, so...
Yeah, me too.
I know. That'd be the goal.
I didn't know chiropractors studied cross-easements and stuff.
Oh, my gosh, I've learned a lot. We're going to be renovating this property, not demoing it, but, you know, it was not working out, so...
Well, it looks great.
Yeah, it is an excellent-looking building, so it's really nice. It'd be a nice addition.
I think looking at the...
As I said, I'm glad it's you and not me.
I've probably seen that in several years of practicing, I'm sure, but I'm excited. Thank you.
Looking at the renderings, I think it's going to be great for the downtown area, and I know you host a lot of events at your current facility, so looking for more events to the downtown area, so...
We're families, you know, we're excited.
Is it...
Thank you for making an investment.
Yeah, it's exciting. I love this town, so...
I could be mistaken, Bill, but aren't there some rather large oak trees on that property?
We're going to be saving those.
You're going to save those? Good. That's good to hear, too. All right. Although that's pretty hard to save an oak. The root system's pretty temperamental.
More trees, it's going to look more natural.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? Okay, so then we'll move this on to the ZBA and the Plan Commission for consideration.
Yeah, it looks great. Thank you for being here today.
Can I make one other comment? Is there any way we can forward this right to the Village Board instead of coming back to committee after the ZBA and the Plan Commission?
There's no variations.
Well, there are variations in the site plan, but if you want us to do that, we'll be glad. I'm sure they'll appreciate that.
Right back to the Board. It just won't come back to committee after the...
Right. I would suggest we do that.
And Brian, would you, do you want to motion, we can make a motion to waive committee if that's...
Sure, sure.
I move to waive committee, further committee review of the Balanced Family Chiropractic Facility.
I'll second that.
Motion from Chairman, Trustee Ranky, seconded by Trustee Danny to waive the next committee meeting and put it straight to the Board. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Camerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
The motion carries. It'll be going straight to the Board after ZBA and...
Good luck, Robin.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all we have for planning and zoning tonight.
They had two. Oh, yeah, that was your second. Still getting this down. Next item we have this evening is the Public Works Committee. Chairman Camerer?
Thank you, Mr. President. First item on the agenda this evening is the wastewater treatment plant facility plan update, and I think maybe Dan would like to give us appraisal of that.
Thank you, Trustee Camerer. Wastewater treatment facility, we've been working with Troy Stinson, who's here. He's going to give the presentation. He's with Strand Associates. We've been working on it for about a couple of years now, and we're at a point where he's going to briefly go over where we're at and what we need to do down at the bittersweet wastewater treatment plant. And the next step will be submitting this facility plan to the IEP A so that we can start applying for the low-interest loans. Troy?
Thank you, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. Again, my name is Troy Stinson. I'm with Strand Associates. As Dan said, we've been working on this for a long time. A lot of the staff that we worked hand-in-hand with are here. This report kind of took a while because we had a lot of meetings. We had a lot of meetings down there to try to come up with a very cost-effective plan. So the presentation outline, I'm going to try to keep it short tonight. Talk about the project goals. Whenever you're looking at a project like this, you try to outline some goals. Engineers love acronyms. WWTP stands for wastewater treatment plant. We're going to talk, can you see?
I'm fine.
Okay. Talk about the history of the plant, wastewater treatment plant needs and project drivers, some key considerations, what's the recommended plan and costs, and what's the next steps and schedule. A lot of times, the treatment plants kind of get forgotten about, right? You bring in water, but now you've got to treat that wastewater, and there's a lot that goes into a treatment plant. So some of the goals of the treatment plant project is to try to meet environmental requirements for the lowest practical cost to the ratepayers. So the first thing is IEP A. They dictate what we can discharge to the receiving stream, their limits. They change. They always have new limits, it seems like. We want to improve efficiencies and reliability by replacing outdated treatment processes and equipment. We want to provide confident direction for the next several decades. So when we do a plan like this, this is a copy of the draft of the plan, is we want to make sure it's going to work for you guys beyond 20 years. We also want to maintain room for future upgrades and then flexibility for future regulations that the EPA is going to likely impose. So the facilities plan, capital improvements for the treatment plant, so on the right there's a graphic, it's an aerial view of the treatment plant. There's a lot of processes to it. I'm not going to try to get too technical tonight. But when we asked our questions when we first started this, we, some of the questions staff had and we kind of came up with was, what projects do we tackle first? What is the cost effectiveness of a larger project? What are the future regulatory needs and timing of those needs, again, IEP A? What existing equipment could fail, and what is the outcome? That's a big one. John's already seen with his treatment plan and equipment failing. Well, certain pieces of equipment are very important. What is the energy efficiency and grant potential? What is the best use of existing facilities, and how does the project fit into the long-range plan? So this is just an aerial view of the treatment plant, and it's kind of blown up. And highlighted in yellow is the facility that was constructed in 1970s. There was an upgrade in the 80s, the 90s, in the 2000s, and then in the 2010. It's been upgraded quite a few times. What that means is most of this plant is more than 30 to 40 years old. Typically, a treatment plant, the equipment lasts around 15 to 20 years. It's a very corrosive environment, wastewater treatment, hydrogen sulfide. It basically eats up a lot of equipment. You have to use a lot of stainless steel and concrete in a treatment plant. So this just kind of highlights the facilities at the age. So what was our need? Why are we doing this project now? The plant age and deficiencies probably the number-one item. Secondly, is controls and automation. Everything is done manually down at the treatment plant because it's older. A lot of valves are being turned. A lot of that can be done with automation. Regulatory changes. IEP A is involving new phosphorus regulations and new nitrogen, or ammonia regulations. And then the last one is sanitary sewer overflows and surcharging. That's whenever the treatment plant gets the news, when there's sanitary sewers and there's a surcharge in someone's basement. So obviously, we want to try to avoid that as well, so that's a big part of the project. Some photos of the treatment plant. I think, Dan, you've talked a little bit about this, right, in other meetings, about the age of the infrastructure. There's equipment out there that they can't even use. I've talked about energy efficiency, operational efficiency. And the last thing is SCADA, which is Supervisory Control. It's data acquisition. It's automation, basically with a computer. The treatment plant's really showing its age. There's just some photos here. This is a picture of some of the brick on the buildings. As you can see, some of the brick is falling now. A lot of the concrete, you can see the concrete is spalling. This is the chlorine contact tank. When concrete gets about 50 years, 60 years old and it's in a treatment plant, it starts to fail. This is a picture of the filters, so the final step in a wastewater treatment plant before chlorination is filtering out any remaining solids. The filter equipment is also in very poor condition as well. Again, another slide on equipment replacement. Whenever we do equipment replacement projects, we try to upgrade to a newer technology to save money. Recent project in Bensonville, Illinois, we did, these are the old, these are blowers, basically, right here, what you're seeing here. When you're at a treatment plant, you have to provide air to the microorganisms. So that costs a lot of energy, the horsepower required to do that. So the two things we look at in a treatment plant are pumping. You have to pump the wastewater, and you have to provide aeration for biological treatment. So when you upgrade those pieces of equipment, you try to go with more energy efficient. It's just like cars, right? Back in the day, 1970s, 15 miles per gallon was probably reasonable. Now, if you want to try to get 30. So they're doing similar things to treatment plants. Again, some other photos of the treatment plant showing some of the corrosion in the tanks. And then a lot of the valves are manually operated. You can put an automatic operator on here with a valve that is controlled by the SCADA system. The other big thing is system controls are outdated and unreliable. It'd be like having a kitchen with 1970 appliances, right? You try to fix an oven, you can't find a part for it. A lot of, this is a motor control center, and basically, it's a very difficult time to get replacement parts for that. So a lot of the controls are outdated at the treatment plant as well. So what are the regulatory concerns? Again, the biggest ones are phosphorus. EPA is requiring every treatment plant to remove phosphorus, nitrogen, and ammonia limits are also going to go lower. I know you're part of the DePage River-Salt Creek Work Group. You joined that work group. That delayed your phosphorus limit for 10 years, so you have to meet your phosphorus limit by 2025. 2025 seems like it's a long time. It really isn't when you're looking at designing something and building it and constructing it and make sure it operates correctly. One of the things we did, we wanted to simplify the treatment plant, and I think this is a pretty nice graphic that kind of illustrates that. So your existing plan, I don't know if you saw the aerial view, but your existing treatment plant has 13 steps. People don't think that, how much it takes to treat wastewater, right? So we come in, we grind up the material, we pump it, and the big thing this year is we pump, not once, but twice through the treatment plant. And I just said, one of the two biggest energy users of the treatment plant, pumping and aeration. I'm not going to go through each in detail, but there's a lot of steps that you use now through the plant. The simplified treatment plant is only eight steps, and we actually get better quality F1. It's just technology, things evolve. So our process and our plan actually recommends a simple treatment plant, which means lower capital costs, lower operating cost. It's really easier to operate, easier to maintain, and it's an improved flexibility. So that's the key. Instead of adding chemicals for chlorination, dechlorination, we provide UV disinfection. An example of, we use UV light to infect the microorganisms versus chlorine. So we looked at several alternatives. I'm not going to, again, dwell on the details, but we looked at expanding biological treatment to 9.2 MGD. And to give that some thought, that's a million gallons per day. So when it rains, the treatment plant goes from around 2, 2.5 million gallons per day to around 15 million gallons per day. You can imagine. That's just because rainwater gets into the system. And you've been spending a lot of money lining your sewers and trying to reduce that, doing a good job with that as well. But that's a big component of the treatment plant, is be able to handle the flows when it rains as well as during dry weather flow period. So what's the recommended project? Again, this is the aerial view, the existing site layout. So I said we're going to go from 13 steps to eight steps. So the biggest thing you need to realize is, I don't know if you guys have been out the treatment plant, but those big blue tanks, the nitrifying towers, those were added for nitrification back in the 90s. Those really aren't needed. We can actually do nitrification in your existing tanks. So because the filter, there's media inside those tanks, and the wastewater flows down through those, that media actually needs to be replaced because it's over 20 years old. We've done some evaluation. We don't even need to construct those tanks. We can eliminate those. The other thing that does is, what do you do? You have to pump up to the tower, go back through. So because we're eliminating these tanks, we can eliminate pumping. We can eliminate chlorine contact tanks and shovel tanks on the existing facilities. This is the actual overall recommended plan, and again, I'm not going to go through all the details of this, but basically, the plan is much simpler. We're constructing less tankage, and we're using the existing tanks as much possible as we can. So a lot of these tanks, the concrete is poor condition in the chlorine contact tanks. I don't know if you saw that picture, that tank we're actually getting rid of. So we're saving the concrete that's good, replacing the equipment in the tanks. That's kind of the key component of the facilities.
How do you do that? How do you save the existing concrete and then replace the...
Yeah, so basically, I'll go back to this photo. It's a pretty good one. So this is a picture of the clarifier. So this is a circular tank. This is where all the wastewater settles. The concrete's actually in pretty good shape around the outside, but inside this tank, there's a metal bridge, and underneath the water surface is a metal skimmer, and there's a metal sludge collector on the bottom, and it kind of turns and removes the solids from the tank. So what happens is, I guess, that's metal. It's been painted, but it was, you know, it's 30 years old. And so basically, what you do is you take that offline during construction, you replace that equipment, and you evaluate the concrete to make sure you don't have to do any repairs. Sometimes you have to do point repairs on the concrete, some point patching.
Get down.
Good question. The other thing, too, is this is a filter building, so this equipment in the filter uses sand to filter out the wastewater, and the upgraded equipment is actually a cloth filter. And so the cloth filter can actually be replaced right in the existing basement. So those are some ways. When a tank gets this bad, where you get a lot of spalling, we're recommending actually demolishing that tank and putting in a smaller UV tank for that part.
Thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt, but it didn't make any sense to me.
Any other questions? I'm trying to go through this fast.
And I appreciate that.
I can get into wastewater, but I can tell you, you guys probably won't want to. You may not want to listen to all of that. But it's a very good question. So if you look at this, we are putting in some fine equipment. We're reusing the existing pump station, but we're reusing these primary clarifiers and the activated sludge bike. We're using the existing tanks but putting in new equipment. That helps save money. We don't have to dig additional holes. There's a couple new buildings as well. Any other questions on that part, kind of what we're doing? There's a lot to it. If you can, can you imagine? It would probably take me 30 minutes to kind of explain all of the pipes and all the buried and all the electrical that goes in the ground with this treatment plant. So what are the major changes? Again, we simplified the treatment and operations. We're going to increase the capacity for wet weather treatment, improve reliability, improve flexibility and efficiency, and reduce energy and carbon footprint. So most of the time, everyone wants to get to the bottom line, is what's this going to cost, right, to do these improvements? So basically, we have two tables here. So one of the things we wanted to kind of have a discussion on is, do we want to do one-phase project or a two-phase project? So remember that first question I asked? What projects do we need to tackle first? That was kind of the first item. So if you look at this two-phase project, screening and grit removal were the first two, the most important, or one of the most important projects, along with tertiary filtration. So screening and grit removal, that's the first step in the treatment process. You've got to get rid of the grit, you've got to get rid of screenings. Tertiary filtration, that's the sand filters. It's the, probably John's biggest headache right now that you have. Filters, basically, the sand media gets washed out, and you have to replace it quite frequently. And it's a kind of a labor-intensive process, plus the controls are kind of out of date as well. And also miscellaneous treatment plant upgrades. That aerial view that you saw, the tanks, there's so many pipes that are under the ground and all the electrical, a lot of people forget about those. So that's what that is. So when we met with staff, we identified our highest priority items were these, four items. It's about $12 million. This is in fourth quarter 2018 dollars, and I'll explain why it's in the future. And then the rest of the facilities are here. If we did a one-phase project, we did it all together, it's actually a cheaper project, if you did the math here. One-phase project is around $27 million. If you did two, you're about $33 million. And the reason that is is because whenever you have to bind up projects, contractors have to be on-site, mobilize, demobilize, mobilize, and leave. There's basically an inflation factor for lost economy scale versus coming on at once. If you think about, I have some schedule here, if you do one project versus two, there's quite a big difference between how long the contractor's on the treatment plant site. So this would be a preliminary project schedule for a one-phase project. We submit the facilities plan to IEP A in 2017, start design in 2017 and 2018, complete with design. We have to submit the design documentation to IEP A, do an IEP A design document review, bidding and award, and the construction of a project like this is typically going to take around two years to construct a larger project. So this project would be completed around 2021. If you did a two-phase project, it really stretches the schedule out. It'd go from 2017 all the way to 2025. And again, the contractor's on-site from 2019 to 2021, and he's again on-site 2023 through 2025. The reason this is important is this, when you have to meet your phosphorus limit, you do that second-phase project. The problem with that is, is then, John, you're dealing with a contractor on your treatment plant site for the next five years, right? Or three-year, two-year, three-year. So what's the difference? One-phase reduces the duration of construction impact by about 50%. One-phase eliminates duplicate steps, design documents, review, bidding, award, and it really saves time and costs. Two-phase, though, pushes your second project later, delaying the onset of the debt service payment, but there may be uncertainty in the SRF interest rate, loan availability, et cetera. So this is just an example of a one-phase versus a two-phase project. So this is percent increase, and this is year. And the Engineering News Record is a magazine that tracks the construction cost index. Basically, all this means is, in 2005, construction costs were 6% higher than the previous year. You had a lot of inflation during that time. In 2015, construction costs went up 2%. Does that make sense to everyone? This graph really does? So in 2016, it went up to 2.5%. So the economy's getting a little bit better. So basically, that's what this graph represents, is what percent increase, what's possible money. IEP interest rate's 1.75%. So actually, it's below this, so if you can borrow money less than the construction cost index, rule of thumb is it might make sense to do the single-phase project. Here's another way to look at it. If you did one-phase project, this is your principal and interest payments. 20 years, you'd pay off the loan. If you did a two-phase project, you would see less principal and interest payments the first few years, but then that would kick in, and actually, you would be, not instead of 6 million, you'd get about 7.8 million. And this assumes the 1.75% interest rate. If you do a two-phase project, maybe the interest rate goes to 2.5%. It's kind of uncertain. I think the rates are going to likely go up. I know I went through that really fast, but...
Yeah, not fast enough.
That's what I figured.
I don't need any of the crappy details.
I have one comment. After looking at this, you know, Rosika Park will never be paved. That can happen.
Did we do any, there's a lot of comments about reducing staff or automation. Does that, is there any numbers that we've crunched over time as to... Does that, is there any numbers that we've crunched over time as to?
That'll be something that we will look at because with automation...
Because if you have one less pump, electricity, the amount of people...
There is a potential there, for sure.
And Mayor, I think you did hit the nail on the head. It's the energy costs that are going to be significant savings. That is, I think, the wastewater treatment plant is our biggest utility user. So, that, making the efficiencies there will really give us some bang for the buck on those costs.
There is grant potential. I believe Bensonville did get some energy grants.
Yeah, Bensonville did a very similar project. They were looking at what you guys were looking at. They had a very complicated process. They just got done with their, their project, we won several awards on the project. We were able to reduce the O and M at the treatment plant by about $300,000. And that was not just because of staffing, but they were replacing everything. So, they were spending $100,000 a year putting, that really was no value. That's what you're facing, is upgrade your existing equipment and then you don't need it later. You'd like a Cadillac and you're pushing it, but you know it's not going to last.
You like, you like car analogies, don't you? Unfortunately, they're only about a one-millionth of the cost of new sewer treatment.
You buy a lot of Cadillacs for sewer treatment. That's true.
Was there any particular thing, Dan, that spawned you to get this study done? I don't, this is kind of out of the blue for us, but...
The reason that we started it back a couple of years ago was the whole phosphorus.
I know the answer.
We have no choice there. EPA has set that limit. We were able to buy some time and that's why we're going through this process now. As you can see, if we end up going with the two-phase approach, we get right up to that deadline for the phosphorus limit. And that, we have to meet that limit, otherwise, we'll be in violation at that point. So, that's why we're bringing it now to, what we'd like to do is now submit the facility plan to the IEP A. That will take six-plus months for them to go through and review and do all their stuff. And then, that enables us to start applying for EPA loan. It's whether we apply for one loan for all of it, or break it up into two different phases and apply for two loans. These, a lot of these capital improvements, you'll see, like the, the filters are in the capital program. I've been putting them in as pieces of the puzzle that need to get completed in that five-year program. This goes out more than that, so, but as you can see, there is quite a bit of work that needs to get done, so...
One of the reasons why we wanted to have Mr. Simpson come in and give you the big picture is that you've only seen it piecemeal in the...
Capital budget, yeah.
And you really need to look at the whole project.
That was very informative.
The project, the only thing I want to point out, too, is the project's paid typically with a loan. So, then, you're looking at a principal and interest payment, you know, for the next 20 years. It's a 20-year loan. And the first principal and interest payment is typically, the EPA allows you to wait until you're completed with the project. So, the first principal and interest payment would be in 2021. So, there is some time to adjust the rates.
So, it buys us time to do those rate increases.
Really, what we're looking for is direction on, on phasing. You know, should we pursue the one-phase or split it?
The savings on the phase one and phase two is almost $8 million.
Over the life of the law.
Yeah, I think that's a no-brainer.
And we don't want to subject the residents to years and years of construction at that site. Because there's going to be trucks coming and going and...
Smelly enough already.
Right, right.
And even financially, it doesn't make sense.
With the interest rate at 1.75, the construction cost is 10%.
We don't have to pay until 2021. We could do the parking lot.
See, because park is safe.
Before we knew it.
Is that enough direction?
That's enough direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
One last question. The gentleman that asked to get in there to clean that out, does he make minimum wage?
It's going to be you pretty soon, Trustee Danny.
People probably tell you, you do real crappy presentations, too.
All right. The next thing on our agenda is the metro payment and parking. And I think, once again, we'll turn that over to staff to let them...
Thank you, Mr. President of the board.
You got 30 seconds.
This will be a lot less complex than the previous presentation. I'd like to thank our GAS department, police, PW, especially our administrative intern, Tyler. He did a lot of the heavy lifting on this project, so it was a real, real team effort. The project that was presented to you tonight is really a twofold project, both having to do with our metro lot. One is a form of payment change and the other is a reconfiguration of the daily versus permit, permit lots. First, I'll take you through the mobile app payment and then I'll show you the reconfiguration. The mobile app is obviously what was stated. It's an application on your cell phone. Residents will be able to download this and they'll be able to pay either both their daily or their permit fees through the cell phone, as opposed to having to run up to the pay station each and every day that they park. And another neat feature about this is there'll also be a virtual wallet, where commuters are able to put anywhere from $15 to $20 in a virtual wallet. The great thing for us is we only have to eat one credit card fee for that transaction, as opposed to getting charged a credit card fee for every single daily transaction. The mobile app, our staff has met with them and we've used it. It's a great app. It's user-friendly. They can sign up via email, cell phone, Facebook, and the interface is actually quite easy. Like I said, our staff and our IT department have reviewed it and we're pretty, pretty comfortable with the software. As far as the dollars and cents are concerned, if a commuter does want to use this per day, they'll be charged 32 cents per day as a convenience fee. As far as our permit parking, they're looking at $1.25 for a total of $4 per year. The cost to the village would be our parking personnel. They would need a tablet or a cell phone, and they would also need a wireless printer. Both of those items would total about $650, plus a monthly service cellphone fee for our parking personnel. But, the savings in the backend, as Dan alluded to during the budget process, that we would have the opportunity to save $26,000. We would try phasing out two of our, our current pay stations, not to mention the savings for time. The amount of, the compliance would go up, violations would go down, the ticketing process would be a lot easier. Our chief could tell you, he spends a lot of time voiding out tickets due to numerical error in the parking, and this app would help reduce that significantly. If you look, we've got one pay station outbound, six pay boxes inbound. So, the two pay boxes that we would try to phase out and not replace, the savings would be in the inbound platform. This is our current lot configuration. We have 628 daily spots and 118 permit spots, giving the percentages of 84% daily. This is our, our proposal to change the current layout to accommodate our commuters and our waiting list. It would bring the permit lots up to 54%, giving 401 permit spots. And the reason why we brought these changes to you, we've had a waiting list that's been active for over 15 years. We've had over 100 people. And the only reason it's 100 is because we stopped taking names. And since staff has began working on this, we've informed callers that there is a chance that they'll be able to get into the program, so we've reopened that waiting list. And there's always been the notion that some, some folks in our community may go to other stations to find a permanent solution. This would bring those folks back to our, our downtown and our metro parking. And also increase the options. If you look at this, we currently only have one permit slot that's in the middle. This would give residents and commuters a lot more options along the rail as to where to park on a daily basis. And currently, as you can see, our comparisons were very, very low on the permit percentage. Right now, we're 16%. The average along the rail that we surveyed along the Milwaukee West Line is at 45%. So, we're proposing to get closer to that average of 54%. That's kind of what our signage would look like. We'd have signs going in and out of each parking lot. We would really only have two categories, permit category and daily category. There would be two zones, one for each. And those signs would be put up along all the parking lots. We would heavily, heavily signage it. And those signs would be provided by the company that we're working out for no charge. So, the, if the board decided to go ahead with this, we would bring you a contract at the next Village Board meeting. And some of the things that we would have to do is contact our existing permit holders, do, you know, an educational campaign through all our platforms. Passport, the company that we're looking to work with, would come in and train our staff, both the main office, parking personnel, and any type of support staff that would be using the system. And we would also have boots in the ground and staff would be at the train station communicating with the residents, probably for at least a good solid week during the transition, letting them know. One of the nice things that Passport would do in conjunction with this is give everybody a free, free day of parking. We'd probably have a short hold on fines because, to get through the kinks, but, but staff's really excited about this. And if you've got any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question I want to ask you. The, what is the history of the company you're working with? What's the reliability? Can you share some of that?
Yeah, they have, they do the city of Chicago. They have places all around the country. They're out of North Carolina. Out of all the clients that they've acquired, they've lost zero. The towns that we've called are very happy with their services. The meetings that we've had with them, we're very pleased. And that retention rate of 100% of clients is, is pretty, pretty good. We're pretty happy about that. And the reason why we're going with this company is because they're the only company that talks to our current system, our pay stations. And so, the software that we have right now, this is the only company that's compatible. So, there would be no further expenses in, in software upgrades.
Just one quick point. I think we'd need to get handouts, right? I think it would be important to have somebody out there with handouts. This is how the change is going to be made to the communication, absolutely.
The educational campaign would be, would be very intensive.
Good.
I have some experience with this type of thing. So, the signage is key. One thing that I run into a lot is when the, the person goes and parks and their phone jams up or whatever, and there's, or there's some malfunction in the system, then they go to the office and then they pay from their desk. Well, they pay at 10:00 a.m., but they parked at 8:00 and the officer came by at 8:30, so the ticket's already been issued. So, administratively, we have to be prepared for that. Administratively, we also have to be prepared for, I think it's actually harder for people to dial the number in correctly in their phone. I think there's something about, I don't know, it just, it actually increases the error. So, in, in my experience, there are people who get it wrong every single day.
Well...
And some communities say, well, we'll give you three times to get it wrong and then, then we'll give you a ticket. So, we're going to have to deal with that administratively.
You're, you're absolutely correct. That is one of the problems that we run into. And one of the great features of this program, unlike our current system, is if, let's say, spot 421 is taken up. So, a lot of the problems we have is somebody will double it up and put in 421. That system, the system that we're proposing doesn't allow for that. If 421 is already taken and somebody punches it in, they get a message that says, this spot is not available.
Okay.
But, we'll definitely keep track of that. That's, it's really important.
Yeah, because I, I think it's common sense that you have to put the right number in and that you have to pay. But, I see a stunning number of people who don't understand that. Well, I was parked at 421. I tried to do it so you guys don't get the money. It doesn't really work that way. So, that's a, that's a public education thing.
Yeah.
And then, and then don't forget to warn your administrative adjudication hearing officer that he may see an increase in tickets. Because I don't think he's going to like, going to like the big bump.
Those, those currently don't go to the adjudication process.
Really?
You should get 100 of them or something.
You go to Rolling Meadows?
Like my daughter got.
You go to Rolling Meadows?
$840 parking ticket.
They go to Rolling Meadows?
Really?
All right, thank you, Scott.
Maybe we can work on that.
We had, and do we need to, you guys are just going to roll this out, right?
It'll be a contract to brought to you.
Very nice. Very nice.
Thank you, Mr. President. That is all we have on the agenda this evening.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss property acquisition pursuant to Section 2C 5 of the Open Meetings Act.
So, moved.
Second by Trustee Danny, second by Trustee Hopkins. Will the court please call the roll?
Trustee Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yeah.
Hammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?